Good afternoon, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Mayor and Council of the City of LaGrange. We will begin with an invocation by Reverend Steve Johnson of Baptist Tabernacle to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight grateful and thankful for the day that you've given us and for life and for breath. If all others would go about the business today of conducting the business of the city, Lord, we pray today you'd give each and every person that will speak the wisdom that they need, Lord, tonight. We pray that you'd give them the knowledge of how to share it. And Father, we ask that you do it all in a spirit of oneness and in unity and that it glorifies you in all that is said, done, and even in our thoughts. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Johnson. Council members have all been given a copy of the minutes of our regular council meeting held on September 27th. I have a motion a second to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. All right, well, we have a very special employee recognition tonight. We have the presentation of a 30-year service award to Brenda Leverett with the accounting departments. I'm going to come down to the podium and ask Brenda and Joe if you and anyone else would like to join me. You will make some comments and then present the pen. I think all the council members and certainly staff know Brenda, and many of you do as well. Brenda began her career with the City of LaGrange 30 years ago. Her first day of employment was October 6th, 1992. Brenda was hired to fill the position of Accounting Clerk in the Finance Department under the supervision of Accounting Manager Betty South. She and Betty worked together for 12 years before Betty's retirement and remained close friends for years. As the years progressed, Brenda was promoted from Accounting Clerk to Accounting One to Accounting Clerk Two, finally Accounting Specialist. She completed several finance officer courses at the University of Georgia and earned her Accounting One and Two certificates. Brenda has always been very active in the community and has donated her time to various charities, organizations, and events. She is typically the first person to step up and offer her health and expertise and the last to go home when the event has ended. Over the years, she has volunteered at many city-sponsored events such as Sweetland Concerts, Sweetland on Ice Skating Nights, Employee Spirit Days, Pitnics, and the Braves Trophy Tour to just a few. She has been an American Cancer Society volunteer for over 16 years and is the City of LaGrange's Relay for Life Team Captain. As the team captain, she is responsible for fundraising and the City Slickers Annual Christmas Parade float. Brenda has been a devoted employee and team member for the past 30 years and has set the high bar for all who follow. Will you please join me in thanking Brenda for 30 years of service? (Applause). If you would like to pen.
You'd better do it.
Okay.
If I stick it, I get it from you.
Well, I always defer to if his spouse is here. So normally I ask the accounting manager, Lisa, or beg if one of y'all would like to make any comments about Brenda?
Lisa.
Okay. Yeah, anything you'd like to add to what I've already said?
Yeah, I'd like to say congratulations. I mean, you've done a wonderful job. 30 years, that's quite a number of years. And I hope the next 30-plus years will be filled with happy times for your family and your friends. Congratulations. Thanks.
I want to get a picture in a minute. Meg, did you want to add?
activities.
I just want to say thank you Brenda for all you've done for the City of LaGrange.
You didn't have to do any of those things.
No, I did it from my heart.
You've been a huge asset all these years.
Appreciate that.
You've kept me straight, for sure.
So that is one of my favorite things to do is present service awards to city employees
I hope you'll enjoy your retirement. We hope to see you pop in and out of City Hall always. Thank you.
and it's really, it's a very common, 30 years is not so much common, but 20, 25 years, 30 Brenda, anything you'd like to say to the council, staff, residents?
It's been a great, a great ride.
years, a great achievement. Thank you for, thank you for all that dedicated service. I have, I think that while we're talking about employee recognitions, I'm going to
30 years it has been. I've seen a whole lot of stuff and it's been, it's been really good.
go off the agenda for just a minute because I'm not sure who's minding the store because
The city's been great to me. They really have. And I'm always the city family though.
it looks like most of our fire police are here in the council chambers.
I might be gone, but I'm always the city family.
So I think we certainly want to, we certainly want to honor our police and firefighters, Absolutely. If I could ask you and your family to join for a photo with the council?
Mom?
Okay. Aye, congratulations. Police Officer and Firefighter of the Year. And so to get, let them be able to get back to their important work, I'm going to skip down and call on Wade Hall from the Optimus Club to come and present Police Officer and Firefighter of the Year.
Thank you. It's kind of different to have folks in front of you and a large audience behind you. Usually in front of the room. I'm Wade Hall. I'm co-chair of the Respect the Law and Firefighter Program this year, and I've been part of that for many, many years. It's one of the highlights of the Optimus Club to do that. I wanted to, on behalf of the Optimus Club, thank the mayor and the city council for allowing us to come and make a big deal out of a big deal. Our police and our firefighters protect us and serve us and we can say thanks, but we need to be thanking them as often as we can. And when you see them in the streets or doing their job, please stop and thank them. The Optimus Club of LaGrange was started in 1951 and we've been doing the Respect the Law program since 1965 when the program was created by Optimus International. When 9/11 happened and we saw the response of all the firefighters and as well as other first responders, we thought it'd be appropriate that we also include Respect the Firefighters. So that's how LaGrange Optimus Club created that program, piggybacking on the Respect the Law for the police officers. We're here to recognize, I'm going to start with the Fire Department first, and I'm going to call on Fire Chief John Brenn, and he's going to say a few words about their selection and then we'll make the presentation.
So our Firefighter of the Year this year is Cameron Byers. Cameron Byers is a bright young man, one of our outstanding young firefighters. He is not only dedicated to LaGrange Fire Department, but also dedicated to the Fire Service in General. He spends a lot of time training within our department, outside our department on a state level, but also goes wherever he can go to get training outside and bring back that to our members. And also, as young as he is, he's also doing a lot of teaching. One thing that, he's an outstanding young man. He has got a great attitude. He is well-respected and well-liked within our department. And, but real quick, I'm going to let Lieutenant Officer Starr come up and say a little bit more about him because he knows him the best. He's his company officer. And, but I want to say congratulations Cameron.
He pretty much said everything. First, I'd like to thank his fiancee Nicole for being here, his mom and dad, Jason and April Byers and his two brothers Caleb and Kason for coming, and his grandmother Charlene. Got them. So you can tell he's got a good family and a good upbringing by the way he carries himself and around, you know, the station on emergency calls and, you know, he's just a great guy and a pleasure to work with. He's, he's, he's been with me for two years now and as, as a young guy, he acts as a senior firefighter in most cases. So like Chief Grant said, he's the go-to guy. He's the, he's the one I can always ask to do something, no matter the time of day, and he'll get it done. And with that being said, that's why we nominated him for Firefighter of the Year because, one, his workload stood out above everybody else and within his peers and, you know, his, his superiors as well. The amount of classes and the knowledge he's, he's hungry for is unrivaled. So with that being said, you know, good job this year. Keep up the good work. You've got a long career ahead of you. Stay on that path. He's fixing to get married next month, so he's got a big life-changing event coming up, so wishing luck with that too. Call him up.
Wait, wait.
This is the Firefighter of the Year Award presented to you for your outstanding dedication and distinguished service by the Optimus Club of LaGrange. Thank you.
If I could ask you all to come and stand before the dais and take a photo with the council and then, anyone else you'd like to have join you? Yeah. Absolutely.
Hey guys, you remember when your hair was all thick like that?
Let's look at Tommy.
Pancake. Yeah, I saw your pictures. Remember, you had a lot of hair. I saw that. That girl was hippie.
Oh, we got one in the back.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, great. Congratulations.
The next award will be for the Police Officer of the Year. This time I'll call it Chief Deckmar.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the Optimus Club who unfailingly, each year around spring, reach out and say we'd like to recognize your Officer of the Year. This year, we have Detective Matondo who not only is the Officer of the Year for the LaGrange Police Department, but in fact was honored last month at the Valor Awards as the Public Safety Officer of the Year countywide. So it's my pleasure to recognize Detective Matondo, but what I'd like to do is Lieutenant Cavender, who nominated Detective Matondo, will come back, come forward and share a little detail or two with you. The way the Officer of the Year is selected in the police department is I don't have a vote unless there's a tie. And I'm very fortunate, in the 27 years I've been here, we've not had a tie. But what happens is every supervisor from the rank of Sergeant or above makes a nomination or collectively supports a nomination, and then there's a secret ballot. And that's how Detective Matondo was selected. So with that, Lieutenant Cavender?
Should not be brief. Detective Matondo, he currently, he works for me in the Criminal Investigation Section where he came from the Patrol Division, and all I can say about him is if I had 10 of him, my life would be easy. Anybody who knows Detective Matondo, he, he's got a no-nonsense attitude about himself. He comes in, he goes to work, and he does his job. And it's shown in his, his productivity and without going through the exact numbers, but one thing, one number I will throw out there is in his first year as a detective, he made almost 70 felony arrests himself and recovered almost a half a million dollars in stolen property in the first year as a detective. He's gained the trust of not only his supervisors that works directly with him every day, but also the patrol supervisors and the rest of the Patrol Division. Like I said, he comes to work, he does his job, and I know that whenever he's working that I can count on him providing the, the quality of service that we've come to expect from our detectives. I know whenever he turns his work in, it's going to be complete, it's going to be thorough. And if there is a mistake, you can guarantee that he will not make the same mistake twice. He takes great pride in his job. He takes great pride in the way he presents himself to the community. I don't think I've ever had a complaint against Detective Matondo. Again, I'm honored to, to be a supervisor, be his friend, and more than anything honored to present him as LaGrange Police Department Officer of the Year.
On behalf of the Optimus Club of LaGrange, presented to you this Law Enforcement Officer of the Year Award for your outstanding dedication and distinguished service.
Thank you very much, sir.
You didn't drive the ice cream truck up here, did you?
Look at Tommy. Great.
One last time, I'd like to thank you all for allowing us to do this. I appreciate it very much.
Well Wade, let me, let me join in the comments that Chief Deckmar made and thank you and the members of the Optimus Club for your, for your dedication to our community and particularly taking the time on an annual basis to recognize our police officers and firefighters. We appreciate that. Thank you all for being with us and certainly our firefighters and police officers, if they need to get, get back on duty, you're welcome to stay for our meeting, but I think that concludes the presentations. Thank you Wade.
That was about 50%.
It was secondly cleared out.
It's a good call.
Yeah, yeah, whoever recommended it.
Future layer here. He says, if I have my raise, I do it.
That's what I do.
Everybody else is doing a pretty good salary enough to keep you. It's in LaGrange water was all in those photos.
Oh, you were doing the visible, right? It's Palmer though, so it's not, it's actually Harris County water. Where does Palmer come in?
They're getting it from Galway Blue now.
Are they guys? They're getting it.
Yes.
Okay, so it's the Harris County. Okay. Exciting presentations. We will move on to public hearings. We're here tonight to receive comments on a Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals recommendation to rezon property located at 510 Springdale Drive from suburban, single-family residential to traditional neighborhood residential. Ms. Kelsey?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this public hearing has been properly advertised. I think Mr. Costel is going to begin the hearing by just kind of giving a brief overview and then after that, we'll allow citizens to prepare.
Sure. So what I'll do is I will, I'll let Mr. Costel, our city planner, give us an overview of the application and then I'll call on the applicant to make any presentation and then anyone else in the audience who wants to comment and share any ideas you have or thoughts with the city council. So Mr. Costel.
Thank you Mayor. The rezoning of a particular parcel is always the initial step in the development process. We're here tonight to talk about the rezoning of a parcel that's roughly one acre in size located at 510 Springdale Drive. That parcel you see there on the screen with the blue polygon around it is actually the parcel in question. What I'll call your attention to, it's actually located there at the intersection of Springdale Drive and Center Circle. The recommendation or the request is, is that that parcel be rezoned to allow for as many as five single-family homes on the property. The current zoning of the property would allow only for a maximum of three. You can see the property sizes there on Center Circle ranging from 124 the whole way down to, I think it's 110. And then many of the homes on Windsor and Virginia Avenue and also ones on Springdale Drive itself, they all have lot sizes of roughly 60 feet. If you can't hear me, please let me know. What the applicant is proposing, even though he'd like to have more lots on the property, is to actually provide single-family homes that range in lot size from 65 feet to 72 feet, even though technically it only be required to have a minimum lot frontage of 40 feet. Should we go to the next slide, please? Now, as with anything else, there are incremental steps that we go through in any rezoning. The application gets submitted, it gets accepted, and then it gets presented to our Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals who make a recommendation to our elected officials. After we go through the rezoning process, then that's where really the devil's in the details. The developers are required to submit conceptual plans, civil plans, and building plans for staff to review from a code compliance perspective. As a part of that review, what we do is look at specific things that are identified within our Unified Development Ordinance, and those are our architectural design standards, and I assure you, there are many. We review compliance with building setbacks, minimum lot size, minimum lot frontage. The square footage of homes is something that we regulate in our Unified Development Ordinance. As an example, homes built on this particular parcel would have to be a minimum of 1,200 square feet and the applicant understands that. Our UDO also sets minimum standards for landscaping within yards that we verify, in this case buffer requirements. We also, you know, set driveway widths, dimensions for front porches, and then if applicable or if the developer would prefer to put them in, we also have regulations for fencing and retaining walls, just to name a few. So I want to, you know, at least paint the picture for you that this is a, you know, a very detailed process. Now, after all of that is completed, then as a part of the, one of the final steps is there has to be the creation, submission, and then review of a plat in order to legally subdivide the parcel, in this case into potentially as many as, as five single-family lots. So that's something once again that the applicant understands. This is an image that was provided by the applicant. You can see there that he is proposing five single-family lots. The lot frontages once again range from 65 feet to 72 feet. And even though our Unified Development Ordinance only requires a minimum lot size of 3,000 square feet in our traditional neighborhood residential zoning designation, the lot sizes that the applicant is proposing average about 9,500 square feet. So they're significantly larger than what, than what's required. The current zoning of this parcel would require a 12,000 square foot lot, so it's only slightly less than that. You also see a, I'm sorry, if you go back one second, please. You also see yellow highlighted area on the perimeter of the property that merely identifies a 10-foot type A buffer that is required. That buffer really separates two residential zoning districts and that's why it's 10 feet. It's not uncommon at all to have buffers, so I just wanted those in attendance to realize that, you know, we've already recognized that as being required. This is the building typology section of our Unified Development Ordinance, and I highlighted two things there. In red, you would see what an individual would be permitted to build under the current zoning designation of property. Highlighted in blue, you'll see identified what would be permitted to be built if the property is rezoned to TNR or Traditional Neighborhood Residential as requested. Of particular interest is the fact that you will notice that townhome developments are not permitted on the property, walk-up flats and stacked flats, which are apartment complexes, would not be permitted to be built on the property. The only thing that would be built potentially if it is rezoned in the future is cottage homes, a cottage court development, a two-family dwelling, or an attached house. And I'm going to kind of give you a higher level overview of what those are. So if we can go to the very last slide, please. A cottage court is something completely brand-new to our Unified Development Ordinance. We adopted that UDO in June of 2021. Basically, it is a series, series of individual cottages that are arranged around a common courtyard, and there has to be a minimum of five and up to 12 of those. And then the dimensions of the courtyard are based upon the total number of cottages. So as an example, if the applicant was proposing to build a cottage court on this property, which currently he is not, if there were five cottages put there, then automatically we know that the common courtyard has to be 2,000 square feet. This TNR zoning designation also allows for individual cottage houses. They're smaller houses as opposed to 1,200 square feet. They can be as small as 750 square feet, but once again, they're placed on individual lots, so irregardless of property, they have to be subdivided sometime in the future. And then finally, we've got what our code refers to as two-family dwellings, otherwise referred to as duplex. That's a building designed to accommodate two dwelling units that share a common wall, either side by side or vertically. And then an attached house, which is highly unusual, but our code does recognize it, where a building, or two dwellings share a common wall, but the building is actually placed on the property line. So half the building's on one property and half the other's on the other property. The easiest way to overcome that is just combine the properties. It very rarely gets triggered, but that is something that, you know, would be a possibility under the TNR or Traditional Neighborhood Residential Designing Designation that the applicant is pursuing.
Thank you, Mr. Costel. Can you, did you conclude, does that conclude your?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Your computer cracked, okay. All right, thank you. So what I would, what I'd like to do is ask the applicant, the applicant to come forward and make any comments for the benefit of the council.
Good evening. Brian Stone with B.C. Stone Homes. As Mark said, we want to build five units here, lot sizes anywhere from .17 to .27 acres, and that's in keeping with the lot sizes surrounding, you know, as you all know, this, this is an infill lot and everything around here was developed way prior to the zoning ordinance ever being adopted. And I think all the lots pretty much surrounding wouldn't meet the current zoning ordinance as it is. So to get it to fit in the box of, you know, in order to be able to be similar to the lot sizes as everything adjacent, you know, it requires this rezoning. We propose five units. Let's see, I brought some styles for you guys. I don't know if y'all, did you share these with them?
I put together, and these, these lots are pretty small, so I didn't really go into, they're pretty small, so I didn't really go into full design on them because we don't really have anything in our current library that would fit, obviously, and I want to make sure we get the rezoning prior to us spending time designing the plans. But I kind of put together some visions for what we would do there. I mean, those aren't the exact houses, but that's kind of what I would think, you know, would fit there, be in keeping with the surroundings, kind of that, you know, 1920s to 1950s, you know, Craftsman-style house is typical.
It very rarely gets triggered, but that is something that, you know, would be a possibility under the TNR or Traditional Neighborhood Residential designation that the applicant is pursuing.
Thank you, Mr. Costel. Can you, did you conclude, did that conclude your?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Your computer cracked, okay. All right, thank you. So, so what I would, what I'd like to do is ask the applicant, the applicant to come forward and make any comments for the benefit of the council.
Good evening. Brian Stone with B.C. Stone Homes. As Mark said, we want to build five units here, lot sizes anywhere from .17 to .27 acres, and that's in keeping with the lot sizes surrounding, you know, as you all know, this, this is an infill lot, and everything around here was developed way prior to the zoning ordinance ever being adopted, and I think all the lots pretty much surrounding wouldn't meet the current zoning ordinance as it is. So to get it to fit in the box of, you know, in order to be able to be similar to the lot sizes as everything adjacent, you know, it requires this rezoning. We propose five units. Let's see, the style, I brought some styles for you guys. I don't know if y'all, did you share these with them?
I had to.
I put together, and these, these lots are pretty small, so I didn't really go into, they're pretty small, so I didn't really go into full design on them because we don't really have anything in our current library that would fit, obviously, and I want to make sure we get the rezoning prior to us spending time designing the plans. But I kind of put together some visions for what we would do there. I mean, those aren't the exact houses, but that's kind of what I would think, you know, would fit there, be in keeping with the surroundings, kind of that, you know, 1920s to 1950s, you know, Craftsman-style house is typical in that area, and was built pretty much throughout that area, and I would assume in that period of time. Everything, you know, would be hardy plank siding, you know, or brick.
Pass these out to, to the people that want to.
Have some more.
Probably hold.
Hold on, one more, one more.
So everything would be hardy plank or fiber cement siding, brick, you know, and I mean, we would do a lot of the little cutesy accents, too, I think, to really bring that Craftsman style of life, you know, I mean, we'd probably, you know, have operable shutters, you know, true operable shutters, you know, a lot of bracketry and things that would go there. You know, there's really not a lot more to say other than that. I mean, it's just, you know, it's, it's a pretty straightforward deal, I would think. It's just, the council's got to decide if, you know, if five lots is acceptable for that area. But that's, that's our plans, and if we, you know, upon approval, we go ahead and start, I would think, before the end of the year.
And just to clarify, these will all be single-family?
Correct.
I mean, I know Mr. Costel talked about two-family duplex, if you will, which, which that zoning list allows for.
He buddied the water on me a little bit, no.
But that's.
No, no, we definitely want to do detached, single-family, fee simple, for sale houses.
Right. And both, and he mentioned the architectural standards, and you just mentioned like hardy plank and some of that. I don't want to get into a lot of elaborate detail, but the UDO has architectural standards such as siding, roof pitch, porch requirements, those types of things. That's what you were referring to.
That's right.
You're, you're familiar with.
No, yeah, Mark, well, he's done a good job explaining all of them to me. So I mean, I'm comfortable we can operate under the UDO. I don't see anything there, so.
Yeah.
One question that I kept getting calls about is, they were, people were curious, were these being built for rental, or were they built and built to sell?
I mean, the intention's to sell them.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I've built a lot of houses in my career, and I own one single rental house, so I'm not in the rental home business. I, I mean, I do, I mean, if they don't ever sell, say we have an economic event, I would rent them, but I mean, I, I haven't done it yet, so I mean, but I just, you know, that's our.
But after you sell a house, you can't control.
I can't control that, sure, but I mean, I.
Buyer lives in it or rents it.
And I, I think, given the area, and if we can do something, you know, in that 325 to 400 range, I think the market would bear it, you know, you know, assuming no fallout in the next little bit, but.
Make sure they all, everybody heard that, you're saying these houses are going to be in the 300 to 400 thousand.
I mean, that's what I would predict. I mean, we don't have all of our basis numbers back. I mean, you know, I didn't want to spend any.
So, let me get this straight. You're not talking about, how should I put it, Section 8 homes? You're not talking about anything that subsidize housing?
No.
You're not talking about FHA homes? You're talking about custom-built?
That's right, site-built homes, for sure, absolutely.
All right, site-built homes that are going to sell at market prices?
Or hopefully above.
Or hopefully at that.
Right. So, but yes, no, I mean, I, I don't know where that would have come from, but I definitely, as far as, I've heard the same, other people saying that we were going to do that, but I, as I said, I mean, just the only thing I can put that on is my track record. I mean, I, I own zero rental homes, period. So I mean, I don't, there's no, no LLC I have or anything, there's, there's none.
Section 8 home?
Never, never. I mean, I've never.
When, when you said arrange a price 325 to 400, what does that equate in square footage-wise? I know 12.
I mean, it'd be probably $200 a square foot.
What, what would your vision the house size be?
I mean, I'm hoping, I'm thinking about, you know, 1,500 to 2,000 square feet. The lots are, you know, with the buffers and the setbacks and, and, you know, and obviously, and people got to park cars, hopefully behind these units. I mean, that's, that's our plan, is to do rear parking, and, and, because I think you really, on a small lot like this, putting a garage on the front of the house, I feel like takes away, especially from the historic nature of what we got here and the area we are in. So my plan would be to have everything parked on the rear, and, you know, and all that. So with that said, that does shrink my buildable area a little bit.
Probably two stories?
I, I'm going to try to do, you know, one to one and a half stories. I think there's a lot of downsizer market in this area, you know, and I mean, that would be one buyer group we would cater to. I mean, in the calls we've already had, just from people know that we had this under contract, I mean, that they, everybody's been a downsizer that we've talked to so far about it.
Can you, can you clarify what a one and a half story is?
It's like a habitable attic to where you basically, you build, it looks like a one-story house, but you have rooms in, upstairs.
And that, okay.
I don't really, I mean, I don't really, it's very difficult to get a two-story home. I want to, you'd want the master on the main, I think, in, in an area like this, and just product price range, et cetera. And when you do a two-story home on a tiny footprint, it gets really tricky to try to get the master on the main and have a decent plan. So I would think, but I feel like in our, our little footprints here, I mean, those are, I think, 50 by 50, so I mean, that's 2,500 square feet, I think.
I got a question.
Well, no, no, this is not the time. Yeah, not the time.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions from the council? Okay, all right.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So we heard from the applicant, and now what I do in a public hearing is I open up the microphone if you want to come and make comments to the council. This is not a Q and A, except with the council. So come to the microphone, identify yourself with a record, and make any comments to the, to the council that you might want to make. So I'm going to ask if anybody would like to make comments.
I was going to say, in my seat, due to minor physical limitations at the moment. The one thing out of that I've heard, 1,200 square foot, 700 square foot, and 15, no, different, at different times for meanings, and 1,500 to 2,000. So you need to clarify in a minute what all of that means.
Well, I can clarify that. He's, he's planning to build 1,500 to 2,000. The city code requires 1,200. Whether, whether he builds one house or 10 houses, he has, it has, there's a minimum of 1,200 square feet. That's the minimum that the city council requires.
Right.
His plan is to build larger than that, but that's just the minimum. That's the 1,200.
And the 700, what was that?
That was in reference to the zoning of that particular.
I think, Mr. Costel, I don't, yeah.
What I attempted to do is lay out for you what building types would be permitted if this property is rezoned as requested. One of the building types is a cottage-style home. For a cottage-style home, which is not what the applicant is proposing, the minimum square footage in our code for that is 750 square feet.
Will, will anything change the presentation of that home, which was a very nice-looking home? Would anything in any sizes change that? I doubt that was a, you say 1,500 to 2,000?
That's what he said.
Okay, minimum is 1,200.
Right.
Will anything change that as far as sizes? Change that look?
I'd have to look, it's my understanding that those images were, those illustrations were provided for, as a point of reference. I don't necessarily know that the applicant is prepared to build that identical model, but I can tell you from a dimensional standpoint, it has to be a minimum of 1,200 square feet additionally. As I, as I alluded to earlier, and I think as the mayor mentioned, we've got significant architectural design requirements to get triggered in our development code. So whether it be the prohibition on vinyl siding, whether it be the requirement that they have a 96-square-foot front porch, whether it be the roof pitch, whether it be the width of the driveways, we establish all of those minimum standards in the code itself.
So if this gets approved, right now, you're asking for five home approval, right?
The applicant is, yeah.
Yeah. If it goes any further, will there be any, I know there's a vote that comes up in a few weeks, will there be any, be any more information, visual information given to us like these pictures that somebody that knows, you know, building whatever?
If the applicant provides it to me prior to the second reading of the vote, I'd be glad to pass that information along.
And, and just, just to, just to further clarify on this, architectural standards, so this is history. Let me just get a little, a little history. So five, six years ago, whenever somebody came and wanted to do a subdivision like this, right, or, or build houses, typically, these questions would be asked, well, what's it going to look like, right? What's it going to, how's it going to affect the neighborhood? Is it going to fit in, et cetera? And so we would spend a lot of time at the planning commission, at the city council level, talk, talking about conditions on the, on the zoning, right? So things like, you know, you've got to use hardy plank or brick, you've got to have six-and-12 roof pitch, you've got to have 96 square feet of front porch, you can't have a front-loading garage. We, we talked about those kinds of things, and, and it became, it became burdensome to do that on every single thing that comes along. So when the city council adopted the UDO, the Unified Development Ordinance, they adopted it over a year ago, about a year ago, year and a half, whatever. When they adopted it, they did it after having met with local builders, local home builders, local realtors, having open houses at the Chamber of Commerce, and so they, what, what we did, what the council did, was write those standards into the ordinance. So those standards are already built into the ordinance, and you can't vary them. In fact, the council can't vary them. The, the planning commission can't vary them. Those are written into the design standards in the ordinance, and they apply whether you're talking about the Newman property that's being developed off Moody Bridge Road, or you talk about an infill subdivision, or you talk about, you know, a new apartment complex being built out, you know, on Vernon. All of those design standards apply to everything across the board. That's what Mr. Costel is, is making reference to. So, so we can, we can get you a copy of, of what all those, what all those architectural standards are, but those are actually hardcoded into the ordinance, and, and every applicant for a, for a building permit has to, has to meet those standards.
So every home, though, would be similar, probably in look or design.
It would have to meet, it would have to meet those minimum standards, and that's his, that sounds like that's his intention, but yeah.
I've lived on Sainer, I've lived on Gordon, I mean, Springdale, I've lived on Waverly Way, and Gordon. I like the neighborhood.
That was a great neighborhood.
I lived for years in the homes, not, not very briefly. There's probably somebody here that's going to get a little better information on this. There's danger in that curve, extreme danger in that curve. You've got two cameras up there. There've been three wrecks that I know of in that curve, maybe more. And one guy almost died there. So that is a, I was over there today, and one home had some work being done, and it was dangerous, to be honest with you. So that is something that has to be, of course, looked at, you know.
Well, you could certainly get the police department to take a look at that, at that intersection and see. I mean, I know it's, it changed a little bit, because at one time, you had a stop condition on Piney Woods, I think, and then they changed it to keep going straight through. I mean, I think there's been some modification, but we can take a look at that intersection.
And we'd like to thank you all for your service to the community, everybody.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, if you come forward and similarly identify yourself and make your comments to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, my name is Bob Keller. I live across the street, 509. It's a great little neighborhood. You're right. Just a few issues to consider on this. As Charles said, there've been three wrecks right in front of our house, one of them darn near fatal. If it wasn't for the rapid response of the Grange Police Department, it would have been fatal. That is a very dangerous curve. There's a lot of streets coming together, and if you want to see how dangerous it really is, come there about time when the Grange High lets out, and they come screaming through there. Also, there's been a lot of repair, and we appreciate it, from the city on the sewer and the water system there. So consider if it's stressing an old system of piping there that might be in bad need of repair. We're also concerned about the number of cars. You know, five homes, we're going to put probably 10 cars in, in that, in that area, which already has a lot of speeding and accident problems. And sometimes it's very difficult to see getting out of there. So we would like you to consider that, and one of our fears is, there's a couple rental properties in that neighborhood that are pretty well rundown, and we just really would like you to look out for our home values in that area. We do appreciate what you do for us. We love this little town, and we'd love to stay there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other, yes, ma'am?
I have a question.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. Mr. Mayor, I have some questions, and it's about this, this plot.
Okay.
As Bob said, my husband, we are right across from that, and the prices are right to the right of us. Now, they have a lot, which is very large, and we have a lot. And we're talking about five houses across, or two houses. I don't see how it's possible, but where are the driveways going to be? Where, where are the driveways going to be for five houses, Dave? Can I, can I, can someone tell me?
So that's, so that's, so they will have to permit the driveways as part of the plat review process, and their guidelines, they have to meet site distances and all kinds of, there are all kinds of issues that are technical, that the council doesn't control, but that's already written into the code to make sure that, that, that there is adequate site distance. Mark?
There are dimensional requirements that dictate how far, the separation between driveways, there are dimensional requirements as it relates to how close a particular driveway can be to an intersection. And typically, whenever we get to the, to the final plat for these properties, the orientation of the home will dictate where the driveway is going to go. So whether or not, I would assume, and I always hate to assume, but if you look at lots one and two, those driveways will likely, I would say almost certainly, go, or empty out onto Sainer Circle. If you look at the two that are fronting Springdale, and it says lot five and 16, but it should be lot five and four, that, those two there would empty out onto, to Springdale. Now, lot, lot three, that's anybody's guess. It's either going to empty out on Springdale, or it's going to empty out on, on Sainer.
Okay, that, that corner piece right there, you have four streets coming together right there, and you want to put two driveways on that corner? That is that dangerous intersection that has a raised area, and that's, yes, the police tried very hard, but I mean, we almost had a pedestrian taken out the last wreck at that corner in someone's yard. There were people outside this, it was broad daylight, because this is a major thoroughfare. The policemen had been out here numerous times, and said to us, they can't really give any speeding tickets, the speeding limit is 30 miles an hour, and they can't put any speed bumps because it's a major thoroughfare. And we're okay with that. They have put a camera up there, but this little corner right here, which is approximately the same size as the two lots, mine and the prices, right across the street, cannot accommodate, in my opinion, five houses and by driveways, 10-plus automobiles. Thank you for hearing me.
Anyone else? Yeah, let, let me come to Hope, and then I'll come back. Or do you want to defer?
I'm Sidney Gay, and of course, I appreciate the neighborhood, having lived on Windsor Avenue and now Lakewood, and having worked on the Board of Zoning Fields. Things are more difficult now than they were then, aren't they, Mayor? My only question is not so much architecture or travel or cars, but why? As I understand it, our zoning is something called residential versus traditional residential. If the whole neighborhood now is the zone that it is, and I may have the words wrong, you can tell me, Mayor, is it traditional?
So suburban versus traditional?
Suburban versus traditional.
So the current zoning is suburban residential?
For everybody.
The proposed is, the proposed is traditional neighborhood residential.
Okay, so everybody in there is in suburban.
That's correct.
And.
And many, many of the homes in there would not qualify with the 12,000 minimum square footage today.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I mean, like, if you look across Sainer Circle, many of those lots are smaller than what he's proposing.
Oh, yeah.
So they wouldn't meet the, they wouldn't meet the current zoning. What happened was when we did that UDO, we had to, we went from the R1, R2, R3, which you may remember from your time on the planning commission, we had to convert all of that to these new classifications.
Yeah, everything gets, gets changed in there, because I don't know if any of those houses could hope to be worth $300,000 or $400,000 in, in that neighborhood, and I don't think that they could hope that their property values are automatically going to raise to that. I would just suggest that since we are, if I've got the words right once again, suburban, and I'm pretty sure everybody that lives there would like to keep the same zoning for the whole neighborhood as it stands now. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
And thank you for keeping the Grange straight for a second.
Thank you, Sid.
Good evening. My name's Hope, I'm a wife, Deborah Taylor. Thank you, Mayor, for the conversation today, and councilman yesterday, we talked yesterday, and I saw the, another councilman this morning in the dentist office, didn't realize that we're going to have this communication tonight. I'm here, and Deborah, in the spirit of communication and clarity for a neighborhood. Why, why are we here? It was our privilege recently to purchase two homes from the DeShields, so I'm here to go on record to acknowledge their contribution to the neighborhood for years, maintaining that and the way they conducted themselves and our dealings with them was above reproach and we honor that. And so we want to be real clear on that. And as I said on the phone conversation, we came into today as friends and we will be friends tomorrow. That's our commitment. So we want you to know that, guys. It was my privilege before purchasing these two homes, by the way, that, one of those will be our home. Deborah and I will live on Dilly Hill. That's our plan to do that. And so then that's the closing point I'll make in just a moment. But prior to that, we lived at 505 Springdale when I was a young boy through my teen years. So that's my old stomping grounds and a lot of memories, a lot of, if you will, emotional investment and having been working over there in the neighborhood now for the last few weeks, I want to say that neighborhood is a jewel for the city of LaGrange. Has unique, unique personality, character to it that is just really, really an asset for this community, guys. It really, really is. So I've had numerous conversations. Quite honestly, I'd rather be over working on a house than I had here tonight addressing you guys. But in the spirit again of communication and clarity, numerous conversations with residents in the neighborhood and I think a lot of it has to do with not understanding some things. So I think what you presented, thank you for your presentation, thank you for the drawings, that helps a lot. That was worth your time to put those together and I'm totally confident you'll build a quality home there. What's at stake is really for all of us to understand, three homes are going in that, are going in that, at least three right now, three homes can go in there and you can start doing that tomorrow. So really, the question is home four and home five, which I really look at it, we're talking about five houses, is really what we're looking at. So, you know, what, the current ordinance is that, I think he addressed that some and that helped in terms of the square footage, 1,500 square feet, that's, I think, a good amount of square feet. And again, your drawings would be, to me, would be an asset for three homes in the area. I had a question about the materials and that's been addressed some, as far as the exterior materials and what it's gonna look like. It's interesting that when Dave and Jan sold one of the homes there on Sainer to the Kemp family, whom everybody in this room will know the Kemp's, right, Kemp's, Florrie, et cetera, I had a thought in thinking about these few minutes to share with y'all tonight and that is this, the Kemp family, young family, just a young child, a young family's moving in there. And then I had a thought about Ms. Livingston's son, who is approximately my age, David, who just moved back into the neighborhood. And then Deborah and I, you know, caboose on the train, moving back, planning to move back in there too. And I thought, you know what this is? This is a revitalization of a neighborhood. I'm gonna call it this, an organic revitalization of a neighborhood. And I would just close with a thought, gentlemen, please seriously consider that we would not do anything to abort an organic process of a neighborhood that has great history being revitalized and what that's gonna produce. So nobody is opposing three homes, nobody's opposing that. The real question, sir, is five homes placed in a relatively small, less than an acre lot, that's the real question. So I know the next two weeks there'll be a lot of communication, a lot of clarification and we intend again to maintain a spirit of communication and neighborly cooperation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Hope. And thank you for the call this morning as well. And I would suggest that the, that you and some of the residents and Mr. Stone have some offline conversation where maybe some more of these specific details can be discussed. And I would ask our staff, Mr. Costwell, to help facilitate that. And I think that we've talked a lot about, and you asked about exterior materials and all of that, I think that, I think that it would help if Mr. Costwell's able to share some of what the, not only what the applicant intends, and of course, we know that he's man of his word, good faith, has intentions, but what the council has required, I think, is also relevant from a standpoint of the minimum standards that I think, if you could share that with some of the residents. And then, do you have, do you have a question?
No, not a question, but I'm gonna let you go ahead and finish.
Okay. And then the other thing that there was some, just so that everybody knows, there was some discussion in the council work session this morning. The Planning Commission has obviously recommended the rezoning to the TNR, which would allow for up to the five dwellings. But as Mr. Costwell showed, that TNR also allows some things other than single family. And so there was some conversation in the work session that if the council were to approve the recommendation and rezone this to the traditional neighborhood residential, that the council might impose a condition on that rezoning that none of the duplexes or those other, be allowed. And that's something that the council could do. So that's a conversation that needs to occur in the next two weeks. Tonight, we're going to, tonight, we're going to read what the Planning Commission recommended. And what I mean is the Planning Commission recommended rezoning from suburban residential to the traditional neighborhood residential. That's what we're gonna have the ordinance read tonight. But over the next two weeks, if the staff works with the homeowners and the applicant, there may be the possibility of having a substitute ordinance introduced in two weeks that would address, that would address some of those particular, some of those particular concerns. There's precedent for that, the council does this on a regular basis. So I think that's something that will just be on the table for discussion in the next two weeks.
So I just wanted to make the comment about, the gentleman mentioned about communication. And I know that when, when we have projects that we do, and you know, everyone's concerned about what it's gonna look like, the growth and everything like that, and everyone has a million different questions. I can recall when I asked Meg to put up a rendering of the park that was gonna be on Hamilton Road Park. And I noticed that when we put up that rendering of what the park was gonna look like, the phone calls stopped, the questions stopped, and everybody was happy. The only question I got was, when does the park open? They were excited about it because all their fears were laid aside. Now, that's not a requirement for private, you know, private builders. That's something we did to kind of like put the community at ease. And I just wanted to share that with you, Mr. Stone, about how we did our construction to kind of like keep everyone's fears, you know, keep everyone in the neighborhood informed as to what is going on. And understandable, they have a lot of questions and you'll be fielding a lot of calls and we'll be fielding a lot of calls. Now, I don't know about the sign ordinance, but I'm sure you could put up a very small one, that if someone was to be inquisitive, they could just walk by and look and see what it's gonna look like. And then maybe, just maybe, that would answer a lot of their questions.
Thank you, yes, okay.
Mayor, may I say one?
Yes, sir.
I've seen your new building is out on the parkway, right? Very good-looking building.
Thank you.
It's a compliment to the neighborhood. I think it looks great.
But the one problem with this here is this sign, you can't read it. Now, you're gonna, you're gonna build a better house than the sign looks.
Well, don't blame him for that sign. That's our sign. That's our sign. That's the City of LaGrange's sign.
I sent a picture, pictures of Mark today.
I got them.
So they can't be seen. You can't read this smaller writing on it, okay?
Yeah, that is entirely on us.
I think further drawings, further drawings and illustrated drawings would be very helpful, like you mentioned, extremely helpful. And the driveway situation on those two houses is a very real thing. Those people got a back out right there. That's terrible. That'd be terrible for them to have to do.
Thank you. Yeah, we've had this discussion previously about the rezoning signs and I do think that's something that we can.
Yeah, walkers see it.
We can work on. Yeah, we've had that issue. We had that when we were rezoning property for Publix or whatever, I mean, you know, it's a little small sign on huge, huge project, so yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think Mr. Stone would like to make some final comments.
Yes, sir. Just to kind of run through the list, the water and sewer, I spoke with Patrick, I think, I mean, he's confirmed everything's good there. Obviously, we still have to verify and go through the process of adding taps there, but we have done our due diligence and on the surface, it seems like that's gonna be fine. This question about home values, like I said earlier, I mean, I think, my intention is to sell these between $190 and $200 square foot. I would imagine that's higher than anything sold to date in the area, so if that works, obviously it would be a value adder to the neighborhood, I think, for the homes there. The traffic concern, to your point about cars backing out on the road, that's one reason I want to rear load them, because you can get behind the house, back out and then come out forward as opposed to backing out into the street. That's part, that's one thing, that's one advantage of having a rear loaded product like we're proposing there. Just echo on the zoning, I mean, I don't think any lot or very few lots in here would meet the frontage requirements or the minimum lot size under the current zoning of suburban residential and the, I mean, very few if any. The, I've even talked to Mark about this and we've talked about on this infill thing. One thing that's, I think is alarming is you have to rezone this property to get, to be able to put it back in this use. And I mean, often a suggestion, I wish you could do this under a variance, but the UDO that was just adopted will not allow you to get a variance on lot size, so that's prompting this rezoning. I think on these infill things, it makes it kind of tricky where a variance would still be advertised and, you know, and it publicly notified, but it wouldn't be the complete rezoning procedure with all the risks of the additional housing types that could evolve from that, you know, if somebody wouldn't, you know, being honest on there. The, I gave Mark my email as well yesterday and, or he's had me emailed for it, but I told him it's okay, anybody calls, happy to email me, ask me any question, you know, when you range a call, you know, we'll be open book on that. To your point about the renderings, you're not the first person that said that to me on this project. I actually got a call from a friend the other day that said I should do that. The issue is, is that we didn't have a design and I mean, your talk, we're gonna, I don't really know that we're gonna be thinking, like I said, from our library that's going to fit this the way we want to do the project, because we're really excited about this and want to do this right, period, correct, and make it blend. And the call, I mean, I'm not, it's just not a big enough project to warrant pending a rezoning approval to go spend $20,000 drawing plans, you know, to get the exact what I'm going to build there.
Right, right.
And that's kind of why we've just put together the visions. I mean, that's where I'm heading with it. And, you know, as soon as, pending we get a rezoned approval, we will design those and all. I just didn't want to put a rendering up there that wasn't gonna be what we were gonna do, you know, kind of thing.
And to, my response to that is, these folks would not mind if you got a student from West Georgia Tech.
Right.
To do your rendering for you.
Sure, sure.
And you paid him 200 bucks and it just, it's all the same.
I understand, but that's all the plan, but I get what you're saying. I understand completely. I just, we just didn't know 100% where we were going from a plan, like layout standpoint and all, and that's the reason I hadn't done that. But I understand your point.
That's not a demand, that's just to enhance communication.
I agree with you. So. I said, you're not the first person that said something this way.
A fellow builder will say.
I totally understand where you're coming from. You gotta spend money to get surveys done, you gotta get plats done before you can even know what size house you're gonna be able to build, plus meet the UDO requirement. So I totally get that you can't put out a rendering of something that you don't know what size exactly.
A minute ago, when I was commenting to Mr. Costwell about the, the council had discussed the idea of the condition on the rezoning to not allow the duplex, right?
I'm okay with that.
That was my question for you.
Yes, no problem at all.
Yeah. Your intention is to build single family.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, I mean.
Yeah, so that's not.
I mean, our reputation is at stake in this deal, I'm not gonna do anything to damage that, so.
I understand, okay. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am? Sure.
So, I hear the plans and it sounds wonderful, but if you look at these five lots and everybody's gonna go in and come back out forward, right? So where are you gonna put the house? Where are you gonna put a turnaround? I guess everybody will come into their garage and back out.
Behind the house.
Behind the house. I would like to just see lot size, in fact, I would like to see somebody go mark off this little corner, the five spots, and then really take a look at this and can there be a house? Can the car back out of the house and come out forward? I just don't know how it's even possible. And maybe if we just had some stakes out there so we could visualize.
So, so, just to clarify.
Yes.
If the council turned him down and said no rezoning, okay, you could still have three driveways on Springdale.
And I.
Okay, so my point in saying that is, the point, that's not, I mean, while that's a very important issue, it's not necessarily something that the zoning determines. That's determined by the other part of our code, which regulates, which Mr. Costwell was referring to, which he'll be glad to give you a copy of, which has site distance issues and spacing and all of that. So I think we can provide that. That's not directly pinned to the zoning decision per se, that's pinned to the plating requirements, which, which we can get, I think that's why the information needs to be shared as to what those safeguards are and what would be allowed and not allowed.
Absolutely. So we can get an idea of what this is gonna look like, because this looks like a plot with a house on it and a driveway, and that doesn't sound very appealing to me.
So if you'll get with Mr. Costwell after the meeting and share, and he can share those requirements.
Yeah, I gotta request contact information. We'll exchange.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody else have anything to comment on this rezoning application? Okay, I'll declare the public hearing closed and we will move on to delegations and I will invite Mr. Glenn Dowell with greater achievement to come forward.
Why don't we give you a second? Just hold up.
Yeah.
Just hold up for a minute.
Okay. If anybody, yes, if you were, most people are staying, though. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. I promise I won't be as long. My name is Glenn Dowell and to the mayor, to the council, and especially to the chief of police, Louis Decmar, it is believed that a community's greatest tool and its arsenal to fight crime is education. And it doesn't say, I put the primary responsibility on that being the school system. The chief, several years ago, provided monies to Greater Achievement to begin the process of providing SAT, ACT tutoring here in LaGrange. That was followed up most recently with monies from the council, which was donated, I think over a year ago, I think it was about $25,000. You have before you tonight, some folders. And in those folders, you have first of all, the thank you letter. You have a report that I provided to you, it's statistical data done by Georgia Tech for me, and it provides the data and results with respect to our activities over a two-year period of time. We have positively impacted the lives of over 300 students in this city, not to include 86 students, additional students whom we worked with over the past 12 months. If you look at the data, which was provided to you, it says we are pretty good at what we do. If you go further into the document, you will see a recognition from, who some people would call the Bible as it relates to the SAT, and that's the Princeton Review. And they bragged on our success here in LaGrange. Not only did they brag on it, we've had significant results and positive attention in the print, in major print and broadcast media concerning what we've been doing. I'm not gonna do a lot of talking tonight at all. I want to add one additional thing. The brochure in your package has to do with a program that was held for three weeks with Summit Solidus Baptist Church. That program was assisted, assistance was provided to us by Louis Decmar, Chief Decmar, Louis Lieutenant Monica Peterson, and your community officers. It was a very successful program that we provided to over 20 people. It was done in response to a murder that had occurred in that community. And so we followed up with prayer vigils and some other things. If we can say, and go along with the assumption that education is the greatest tool in a community's arsenal, we could assume that those 300 students or so won't commit crime. They won't be criminals. And I want to say and go on record as saying LaGrange was ahead of things, because that's what the Department of Justice and others are doing now in communities, looking at successful organizations who have been doing, what the chief and others had a vision to do a few years ago, and that is to provide assistance to an organization such as ours. When we look at it, we've had students to go to West Point Military Academy. We had just. We had just recently students who were involved in medical research, neurobiology, and I'm going to stop very quickly because they wanted to say thank you because it was doing part to what the city did for them. And I've encouraged them to go into not neurobiology, but something that relates to all times, all centers of life, a dementia that I get older to do that. And we also have some other, another person here, another, a young lady who we assisted who continued to be the Dale Zellmiller Scholar, okay, here. We have Ms. Willimay Callaway, she's executive director of Greater Achievement. We have Mr. Andrew Moody, who provided resources to a young lady who was accepted, who came through us to West Point Military Academy. So all of these kids, if you go back what Georgia Tech has said in its data, the majority of our students scored 1,000 above on the SAT, the ones that we had to data for. Those who we had to data for, for the ACT, the majority scored 19 and above. But that's going to be my piece, I'm going to bring this, Ms., Mrs. Cedric, Cedric, are you going to do it or you're not? Which one? Cedric, okay. And then we will have Ms. Kim Stewart, whose daughter was Zellmiller Scholar. Okay. And that's all you have for me tonight, very quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. If you'll come and identify yourself and make your comment.
Absolutely. As always, Mayor Thornton, city council, it's always a pleasure to stand before you guys and share what this program has done for me and to thank you guys for your investment. As we know with businesses and everything else, making a monetary investment is risky and you have to, to wait and reap the benefits of it. And I'm grateful again for your investment because the Greater Achievement program, it does exactly what it says it does, Greater Achievement. Success is not a quantifiable measure, there, there's no schematic or, or spectrum on success. But Dr. Dowell and Mrs. Willimay Callaway, as well as Mr. Agarlin Braxton, this program brought students in from the community and taught us how to think critically, analytically, and on the basis where we take conceptualized information and we are able to develop a thinking that is required for the SAT, ACT. So being in the public school system, we are again taught conceptualized information, we know, you know, comma slices and how to read a paragraph, grammar, we're taught these, these conceptual bases of education. With Greater Achievement, it takes that conceptual basis and it elevates it, not a step, but a couple steps higher. And it challenges an individual to think outside of the box and to apply this conceptualized information onto standardized tests. Standardized test for me, it was, could have been the barrier of me entering into Morehouse College. I am grateful to be a graduating senior with a major in molecular biology and neuroscience. And with this program, I had, was going to Kennesaw State University of West Georgia based off of my, my first SAT score. My mother and father told me about this program and I hesitant, I'm like, it's Saturday, I have to get up at eight o'clock in the morning to go, I do the school Monday through Friday, I'm like, you know, what, you know, I don't want to do this, you know? So I went. And again, I had to make an investment into my own education and learning. I went with an open mind, ready to learn, and everything else took care of itself. So then, by increasing my, my SAT score, I was able to confidently apply to Morehouse College and get accepted, as well as receive a monetary award, which I like to say Morehouse pays me to go to Morehouse, I don't pay Morehouse. And so the question, the question may be how, okay, so Greater Achievement, it gets you into college, but then what happens afterwards, right? So taking a level of thinking, knowledge, and understanding has allowed me as a, as a biology major in neuroscience, bio neuroscience, as well as conducting research at Columbia University, taught me to reach this level of, 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 of thinking that is aside from the SAT, ACT, and develop into my collegiate journey and then even post back to it. And so again, I appreciate your investment, your time, Chief Decmar, and especially to my wonderful parents, and I would continue to urge your support for our program because we are the future. I am a La Grange native, born and raised here all of my life, and, and I'm grateful. And so you guys have any questions or concerns for me regarding my experience with, with the program?
We're proud of you. Thank you, thank you for what you've done.
I'd like to say, yeah, I know your mom and dad's proud of you, went to school with them, great, great family, and I know who's proud.
Thank you, Mr. Senior. La Grange Kennesaw is a fellow, fellow, fellow at Columbia University.
What would be the best years of your life?
My name is Kimberly Stewart, I am the mother of Alexia Hurston. My daughter was a former member of the ACT SAT prep program. I'm going to read a little bit of brief about what on her behalf. In 2016, 2017, she was preparing for what at the time seemed to be the biggest obstacle of her life. Going to college was always her goal, however, she knew that she had to succumb to the obstacle to achieve her goal, and that obstacle was the SAT and the ACT. As a flourishing student, she knew that she had the knowledge she needed to take the test, but was not sure of test-taking strategies and approaches. She was then introduced at Calaway High School to the ACT SAT prep program by Ms. Willimay Callaway. Ms. Callaway is also a family friend and fellow neighbor. She ensured, she ensured Alexia that the program would give her every tool that she needed to be successful and to do what she said it would do. On Saturdays, her and her peers, peers went to La Grange College where the SAT and ACT prep was held. Not only did she practice test content, but was also practice test-taking strategies. Not long after it, she took the ACT and scored significantly higher than she did previously. Alexia was then able to successfully apply to college and where she was accepted into many well-known schools. After that, she decided to further her education at Spelman College in Atlanta, Georgia, and she later transferred to the unthinkable Albany State University in the fall of 2019. While in college, she experienced challenges with state scholarships in which Mr. Glenn Dowell assisted her with no hesitation. She was told that she could no longer receive any more scholarships and she would have to pay for college out of pocket. If she could describe Mr. Dowell in four words, it would be one call, that's all. Due to his expertise and hunger for student success, she was able to use the rest of her hard-earned scholarship money to finish out her senior year. On May 7th, 2022, she graduated summa cum laude from Albany State University with a Bachelor of Science degree in Biology in a 4.0 GPA. She is currently working for a children's neurologic clinic and studying for the MCAT to enter into medical school. Alexia is forever grateful for Ms. Callaway and Mr. Dowell for believing in her and teaching her that everything seems impossible until it is done. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and sharing, thank you for coming and sharing that story and please let Alexia know that we're proud of her.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we have one other person, Miss Adrian Braxton, who made it happen.
Okay.
Because when the students saw me the first time, they disliked this man. They didn't want to be here until after the second week. So you're my backup.
How's everybody doing?
Doing great.
So yeah, my name's Adrian Braxton, I have been working with Greater Achievement for the past six of their seven years, starting out with the SAT, ACT program. It was, it was, it was a little nervous my first year, not going to lie, but having my fellow friends from La Grange College come with me and help tutor these students into good scholars and independent thinkers, it really made the difference. We, I was able to, with your, with your support, we were able to recruit more effectively, more efficiently, and train more efficiently to prepare to tutor them on these Saturdays. Summer, summer schools for the elementary school, your support helped us reach out to younger students, even make an impact at a younger age, and do even more work at the TC3. And I really appreciate your support as, as well as their support for believing me in to, to be a tutor. Thank you.
Thank you for your work. It clearly has more intrude. Thank you.
I'm, I'm just, just full disclosure here, I'm just going to take a little bit, little bit of the thunder away. That's kinfolk and that's kinfolk, so I'm proud of both of you, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Gaskin, appreciate, appreciate all of your work.
Thank you, that's it.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Hi, may I come there?
If you can be, if you want to come to the podium, yeah.
La Grange is my hometown, man, and La Grange is full of good people. And I hope that witness that you're getting, that La Grange has something for you to come back and bring that back here and pass it on, because we were, that's all I have to say, I mean, that's it.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for your note. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Dowell. I'll move on to reports and ask if any city council members have anything they would like to report tonight.
No report.
No report.
A slight report.
Okay.
I just want everyone to be aware of the construction that's taking place on 285 and how the traffic coming down 75 might be diverted towards this way as the 27 bypass to get truckers around 285. I just want everyone to be aware of that, we may have an increase in truck traffic.
Boy, it was certainly something we'll monitor. All right, city manager report, Ms. Kelsey.
For you tonight, mayor, the financial statements for September, as well as the payment over bills, I'm sorry, the payment of bills over $2,000 are attached to your agenda, agenda materials. I'd be glad to answer any questions, we don't have particular comments at this time.
Any questions for the city manager about the financials?
The check that we received, has that money been spoken for?
We have deposited that check.
Did it bounce?
No, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions for, oh, okay. All right, and then we also are going to consider declaring property on SL White Boulevard as surplus.
Yes, sir, we, someone reached out about buying a portion of property that we own on SL White Boulevard. As council is aware, we can't enter into a direct sale of property, so the action item would be to declare that.
Motion to declare property surplus.
And I would recommend that you set a minimum bid of $13,000 for this .23 acres.
Motion to declare property surplus with the minimum bid as per city manager.
Can I have a motion and a second? I have a second to declare the property surplus with the stated minimum bid. And of course, like we've done in the past, that the city will accept written bids up until a certain date for the property and the high bidder who meets the minimum would be the, the, would be the purchaser. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no, that passes unanimously. Okay. Anything else, Ms. Kelsey?
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, under first reading of ordinances, I have an ordinance rezoning property located at 510 Springdale Drive from suburban, single-family residential to traditional neighborhood residential.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of La Grange to amend the zoning map, an ordinances of the city so as to reclassify the use of real estate located on Springdale Drive and on by David and Janice De Shields to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix infected date and other purposes.
No second readings tonight. Under board and agency appointments, we have a board of planning and zoning appeals appointment, four-year terms to succeed Susan Bowie and Kate Berkeley. Council previously discussed that Susan Bowie is active and would like to be reappointed, Kate Berkeley has asked not to be reappointed, so I think we did discuss one particular possibility, it would be appropriate to entertain a motion this time for replacements.
I'm making a motion to, I guess, keep Susan Bowie on and to replace Kate Berkeley with Goldsman.
Second. I have a motion and a second to reappoint Susan Bowie and to appoint Nicole Smith to the spot held currently by Kate Berkeley. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no, that passes unanimously. And then under the La Grange-Troup County Hospital Authority, we have a three-year term to succeed Joel Upchurch. Under the provisions of that statute, the council is required to submit three names to the La Grange-Troup County Hospital Authority and they pick from those three names. Mr. Upchurch is currently serving and would like to be reappointed, but we would need to submit a total of three names.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we offer up three names, Joel Upchurch, Jim Thornton, and Chief Decmar.
You can't appoint me, you can't appoint a member of the government.
Chief Brandt and Chief Decmar.
So, so they have a motion to submit the names of Joel Upchurch, John Brandt, Lou Decmar.
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no, that passes.
I didn't vote aye.
Okay, all, all in favor.
I didn't say it at one minute.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Phil didn't say.
No, I said it.
Any opposed, no, that passes unanimously. Okay. All right, closing comments, Ms. Van Schor.
Yes, sir. Our good news on Friday, we were very excited to announce that Moss and Wood Park opened and Granger Playground opened, and we also wanted to show you a video of our entry into the visionary city award for GMA. We have entered this video into, hopefully we win it, and we just wanted to say thank you so much for Mayor Thornton, Mayor Pro Tim, Dr. Edmondson, and City Manager Kelsey for being a part of this. So I hope you enjoyed this video about our parks vision that Ms. Kelsey.
Parks have a way of pulling people together. We had people screaming, we need places for our children to go, we need places to have events, we need places to go and just enjoy. By listening to all of that, that's when we brought it back to the council and all of us. I can't say just one or two of us, all the council, the council and the mayor and the city manager, we all put our heads together.
The park plan is an intentional effort by the city to make parks a priority, to invest in parks, to do the kinds of things that our residents have been asking us for as it relates to our park system. The legacy is the physical beauty that the parks bring, the amenities and the quality of life, opportunities that it brings to our residents. These will be investments that benefit our children, grandchildren, residents of the future of La Grange.
So the linear park was one of our first projects, and we worked with the housing authority, brought us to the table as they were building their new multifamily apartment complex. They got the Callaway Foundation on board, and so we paid 50/50 for the park project. And then we moved over and did the project over on Hamilton Road, which we now call Moss and Wood. That was really brought forth and the funding for that project came through the federal government, through the ARPA dollars. And then today, I'm out here at Granger Playground, so this was actually brought forth by the La Grange voters. They were concerned about the dilapidated state of this park, and so they voted for a sploost, and in that sploost came about this project and money was allocated to create the beautiful facility that you see behind me today.
We want there to be a park for everyone in La Grange, and it's important that all of these parks be spread throughout our community, but they're not necessarily immediately adjacent. And so what's great about the thread, our multipurpose, multi-use trail system, is that people can walk, bike, jog, walk their dogs, push their children in strollers, and they can connect one park to the next. So the thread literally is connecting our parks.
So all the parks, I want to be a unique destination for families to go to, so there's something different at every park. So at Granger Playground, you're going to find a trike track that you're not going to find in other parks. And then we hope to progress that to a bike park, which we're planning in other parks, and then we hope to progress that to a bike park, which we're planning right now with the PATH Foundation.
This park is gonna be named Moss Wood Park. It has really turned out to be a great park, the amphitheater here and playground for the children, picnic tables, and we have grills and things, so people can bring their families out, they can all come and enjoy this park, just a wonderful thing.
We think that our designs are innovative, we think that as we create unique destinations for the citizens and their families, we wanna bring a huge quality of life factor to La Grange, and we think building these parks and putting in these amenities is going to do that, and really has already started attracting people to La Grange. We've got a really exciting project coming out on what we call Ridley Lake, that's a huge lake on that property, our thread system will go around it, we'll have playground equipment for special needs children, so it's something that we don't have in our community, it'll be a great place to fish, to kayak, so we're super excited about that new park coming online as well. There are a lot of work to do, but at the end of the day, I feel very rewarded in what we're doing, and I can't wait till we see kids out here playing, enjoying it, we're already getting, you know, some really nice compliments about the transition of the parks, so that excites me, that people really do value what we have here and really do value the park system.
Great job on the video, great new additions to the community, and you could not have picked a better day to open La Granger and Moss and Wood last Friday and this past weekend because it was absolutely beautiful and great weather. We stand a jerk.